This is a special meeting. It's actually supposed to be the, we were supposed to have a regular meeting Tuesday, and we canceled that because Neve received a phone call from the National Weather Service about 2:00 o'clock that day telling us that we were in the eye of this weather system and we were likely to get the worst of it because we had the highest temperatures. Fortunately, we did not get any of the severe weather. It went to the north of us. Later that evening, you know, we were shaking our heads, you know, we canceled the meeting. And later that evening, we had a tornado warning that was, you know, involving the southern part of the county. And fortunately, that didn't last very long, and they canceled it. So this is a special meeting. We've got a fairly lengthy agenda. I'm gonna try to move through it as quick as I can. I'd like to ask everyone if they would just to turn their phones on silent or turn them off. And at this time, I'll call the court to order. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Jim Absher if he would say the invocation for us.
Please pray. Merciful, gracious, and God-loving, Heavenly Father.
Father God, as we gather here today to do the business for the county, I just pray, Heavenly Father, that you will give us wisdom and a knowledge, Lord, to conduct our meetings and our thoughts and things that we do that benefit this county, everything that we do, Lord. We always give you the praise and the glory and the honor. Bless each and every one here today. Watch over us, forgive us of our shortcomings, just help us, Lord, as we travel this uneven journey of life. Lord, we love you and we praise you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Scott?
Present.
Commissioner Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Absher?
Present.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Mr. Ernie Justice, man who's very special to me, if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I plead the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the March 12th in the March 19, 2024 meetings of the fiscal court. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Absher. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the approval and swearing in of members of the Pike County Reapportionment Commission. Since the voters have elected to go back to the magistrate system, by May, we have to have a plan in place, or by sometime in May, we have to have a plan in place to have the boundaries of what will be the six magisterial districts drawn. The process is that the Pike County Clerk Darrell Pugh will serve as a non-voting member of this panel, and then there will be one person designated from each commissioner district. We have three individuals, one from each of those three commissioner districts, that will work on the apportionment maps that will be submitted to the fiscal court. Commissioner Scott has recommended Elman Walters. Commissioner Atkins recommended Lonetta Moses. Commissioner Absher has recommended Ernie Justice. It would be my motion that these three individuals, Elman Walters, Lonetta Moses, and Ernie Justice, be appointed to the Pike County Reapportionment Commission. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. And I think we, Roy, we do need to administer the oath. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Lonetta, we need you all, and I'll need Ernie, and I'll need Elman to stand up, and please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the duties of reapportionment commission according to law? And do you further solemnly swear, since the adoption of the Prince of Constitution, you being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted the challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying the challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God?
Aye, aye.
Thank you all for being willing, Lonetta. Thank you all very much for being willing to serve on this.
You're excused now.
You are excused now, and you can get with Mr. Pugh and set up a tie, either today or at some point to...
Not now.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
I'll see you in a few minutes. Next item is the adoption of resolution declaring April 18th of 2024 as Hillbilly Days in Pike County. And local Shriner and Pike County Commissioner Kleiner Atkins has asked to read the resolution. So Commissioner Atkins, would you please proceed with reading the resolution?
Okay. Whereas for this 47th year, the hillbillies from across the nation in Canada will travel to Pike County, Kentucky to attend one of the Commonwealth's largest outdoor festivals. And whereas, we hereby honor the founders of Hillbilly Days, Howard Dirty, Ear Stratten, and the late Shady Grady Keeney, for their vision and commitment to the success of such an enormous charitable event. We applaud our Shriners, participating organizations, and volunteers for working so hard to carry on their vision. And whereas, the festival with a heart has generated over 3 million in proceeds that have been donated to the Shriner's Hospital in Lexington, Kentucky. The hospitals use the donations to provide the highest quality of events, medical care to children with a variety of conditions regardless of their ability to pay. And whereas, Pike County currently has 330 children receiving care at the Shriner's Hospitals for Children in Lexington, Kentucky. In addition, 1,078 children from surrounding counties of Floyd Johnson, Mcgoffin, Lecher, Knott, and Martin are receiving care in Lexington. And whereas, Hillbilly Days is a source of pride and accomplishment for Pike Countians and others that attend and contribute to this great festival with a cause. Now therefore, be it resolved, I Ray Jones, and Pike County Judge Executive and the Pike County Fiscal Court do hereby declare April 18th through the 20th of 2024 as Hillbilly Days in Pike County, Kentucky, and urge all citizens to participate in the many activities to support this wonderful event.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Well, actually, it's my motion. So I'll make the motion.
Second.
To...
Thanks.
So we have a motion and a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Y'all get a picture, Jim? Jerry? Y'all get a picture? All right, let's get everybody down front. We'll get the commissioners down front. Yes, sir. We'll take it from there. Give him a shot. Give him a shot. We need to prepare coffees, I feel. Before I go any further, I don't know if, let's see if it's on here. About this right here. We got this on the agenda? too far into the meeting and people tune out on us. We are providing free weather radios to Pike County residents. We obtained a grant. Sharon worked on it. Mercy Management worked on it. These are Midland weather radios. There's no cost to them, and we are providing those to Pike County residents. We, if we've seen some of the craziest weather in the last few years, we've had high straight-line winds, severe thunderstorms, floods, ice storms. So these are something that could be a lifesaver. And right now, we have, the first round is we're gonna try to get them in the hands of senior citizens. So we've got, on April 10th, they'll be at Shelby Valley Senior Citizen Center, on April 11th, at Blackberry Senior Center. 16th of April will be at Kemper Senior Center. The 17th, at Belfry Senior Center. And the Elkhorn City Senior Center on April 25th. And we're doing the senior citizen centers first. They will be distributing them between 11 and 2. We're gonna be setting the following, probably the following week or so, we're gonna be setting up a location in Phelps, and we'll have some other events around the county. If you can't make it to one of these events, and these are all gonna be on my Facebook page, they'll be on the Pike County Emergency Management page, I'm sure that Commissioner Atkins and some of the other members of the court may share that on their page. If you can't get to one of these events, call Pike County Emergency Management, or call the county judge's office. Mercy Management's number is 432-0210. And the judge's office is 432-6247. We'll make arrangements to get one to you. We have to send it out with road crew or even with solid waste. We'll make sure that you get a radio if you think you need one. We need to get these in the hands of people, particularly who live in areas where there may not be great internet connection or cellphone, and starting with people who may not have a landline. Now, we also have the Rave Alert System. It's free. All you have to do is go on Pike County Emergency Management's Facebook page, and there's a little thing that says "Use App." It's a blue tab, and if you'll click on that, you can register. And if there's any emergency notifications, that will be sent out automatically, and you'll get a call, or usually it'll show that 432-0210 number. We don't have as many people signed up for Rave Alert as we should have. We've talked about this since I've been judge, trying to get people to sign up. But, you know, we've had, we had a period where we had four flood events in about a year and a half. We've seen, you know, other parts of Kentucky having tornadoes in December. We can't predict what the weather's gonna do, and if you do need one of these radios, let us know, because we do need to get them out in the hands of the people, particularly in those areas where they may not have internet connection or a landline or cell phone. All right. We posted these. We probably will get these out, these notices out to the senior centers. Diane, if you can get these. And if there's any senior citizens that can't make it on those days, let us know, and we'll make arrangements to get them to you, so you can get them distributed for us, okay? All right. Next item is acknowledgment of received audit of former Pike County clerk for the year ended December 31st, 2022. It's my understanding, Frankie, this was a clean audit?
It is, Judge.
All right. I want to thank former clerk Rhonda Taylor for her effort, another clean audit by her office staff and her administration. Is there a motion to acknowledge received audit?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is adoption of resolution authorizing the usage of the KCDBG procurement code for the Pike County CDBG projects. It's a required document. I'm trying to see if we have that in here. Sharon, what resolution is this one? I know we've got these other ones we have to do. That's Kentucky Community Development Block Grant, correct? Okay. We've got the resolution in here just out of place. This is marked as number nine in the, on the sheet for the members. Is there a motion to adopt the KCDBG? I'm sorry. The KCD? Back up. I'm wrong, I'm wrong about that. We don't have that in our packet. Is that correct? So is there a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the usage of the KCDBG, which is the Kentucky Community Development Block Grant procurement code for Pike County CDBG projects?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Now, that item and several of these others are items that we have to do annually as part of our grant program in order to apply and receive certain grants, so that's what we're doing. The next one's adoption of resolution authorizing the execution of the assurance of compliance under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 for Pike County CDBG projects. Again, this is required document. Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next matter is the adoption of resolution approving the execution of the Fair Housing Resolution for the Pike County CDBG projects. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Absher. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is adoption of resolution approving a drug-free workplace statement for Pike County CDBG projects. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the adoption of resolution approving the execution of residential anti-displacement relocation assistance plan under Section 104D of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended for Pike County CDBG projects. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the adoption of resolution approving the execution of residential anti-displacement relocation assistance plan under Section 104D of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended for Pike County CDBG projects. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the adoption of a resolution that establishes the use of any rental payments and fees, which clearly designates that all revenues and expenditures of funds will be used in accordance with program income miscellaneous receipt regulations promulgated in CFR 570.489, subparagraph E1IV, for county CDBG projects. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Absher.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is approval of the project planning and administration contract agreement for the Kemper Volunteer Fire Department. This is for the project that we're working on. Sharon, you want to explain this just briefly? Yeah, if you don't care, just explain what this is.
All of the projects that we do, that we get grants for, has planning and administration, and the ones that we're doing here in the county I do. And it pays for us to do that administration on those projects. Actually, it's required, that we have to have a contract that proves to them that this will be administered the way it needs to be.
Ian, what is the status of that Kemper project?
Oh, the Kemper project? We're just waiting on the plans to be approved, and these were all of the articles that needed to be in place before they get approved. From what I'm told, it should be approved by the end of April.
Okay.
And then ready to put out in bid in May.
All right, good. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the project planning and administration contract agreement for the Kemper Volunteer Fire Department main station?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Absher?
Second.
I'll make a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is approval of an agreement with Kemper Volunteer Fire Department that states the fire department will pay for any overages on the construction of the new fire department station. Roy, prepare the document. Project runs over budget, Kemper Volunteer Fire will pay for that overage. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Absher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is adoption of resolution supporting Homeland Security Grant for radio repeaters and testing equipment. Basics for the Pike County Fire Department, and authorization for the judge executive to execute all related documents. Sharon and Tim Fields are preparing the application. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Commissioner Atkins has the motion. I'll make a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the adoption of resolution of the Pike County Fiscal Court authorizing the filing of an Amler Abandoned Mine Lands Economic Revitalization Program grant in the amount of $881,446.18. Funds will be used to purchase equipment for Pike County landfill, authorizing, directing the judge executive to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by DOG or others to carry out this project, and authorizing the judge executive to act as authorized correspondent on the project. We're trying to get this grant money to buy a air curtain, I'm sorry, air curtain airburner with a wood chipper, a bush hog, with a bush hog chipper attachment for a skid steer and a track skid steer. That's to help get the brush and stuff at the landfill under control, plus the debris that's gonna be generated from the expansion of the landfill. Is there a motion to authorize this grant application?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Scott?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Absher. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the second reading of ordinance allowing ISO funding or incentive funding to be withheld. This is what we had talked about before. If there is a fire department or rescue squad that is not in good standing with the Fire Commission, or that has, that we have information of financial improprieties or irregularities, which we know is the case with at least one here in the county, that it will allow me to withhold the funds from the ISO or any other monies. And there's an appeal process that the fire department can come before the fiscal court to challenge that. But we, we do believe that there is a significant criminal issue involving one county fire department. I'm not gonna go into too much detail, but in my opinion, we do not, if we have evidence that there's something amiss, whether they're not in good standing with the Fire Commission, the State Emergency Management Agency, they failed an audit or a compliance review by the fire, by the audit or compliance review failure by the Fire Commission, or any officer or board member has pending criminal charges in your state or federal court, or they're under active investigation by the AG, Commonwealth Attorney, State Auditor, the FBI, it would allow those funds to be withheld. But now, if for some reason those issues aren't addressed within 12 months, the money is forfeited. I do not believe that if the court has knowledge of those kind of problems or improprieties, that we should hand any taxpayer money over to those organizations until those issues are addressed.
Right.
So, Roy, would you please present the second reading for us? Would you please present the second reading, Roy?
I'm sorry, Judge.
Would you present the second reading?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Of the ISO?
Okay. It's an ordinance established in the Pike's Fiscal Court allowing ISO funding or incentive funding to be withheld. As you stated, I think you pretty well told everybody what it's about. There is an appeal if a department thinks that their money's been withheld wrongly. As far as the technical aspect, I will say that this was read, the first reading was on March 12th of 2024, and it was advertised, publication in local newspaper on March 19, 2024. It's in order.
Thank you, sir. Is there, I'll make a motion to adopt this ordinance related to withholding of ISO or incentive funding. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Absher?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is a second reading of an ordinance prohibiting use of trailers longer than 30 feet on certain county roads. We had another tractor trailer that got stuck on County Mill this week, I heard. And Fabian's worked on that. It's a perpetual problem. I looked at the one at Sookie's Creek, Fabian. We probably need to put one right at the mouth, right when you turn down in there, to keep them from turning down in there, because there's still people trying to get through there. Every one of these roads, Fabian, is that the GPS that's routing them through there? Is that what it is?
That's what it is. That's what it is. GPS routing the drivers on these roads. They're going to cut a five-inch long. Actually, it's called two or three yards.
All right. Roy, please proceed.
This is an ordinance established by the Pike County Fiscal Court prohibiting use of trailers longer than 30 feet on certain county roads. Those will have to be done by the road commissioner, and if they're not on the list, then he'll come to the fiscal court to seek approval to do an additional area or additional signage. This was first read on March 12th, 2024, publicized on March 19, 2024, in the local paper.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to authorize or adopt the resolution regarding prohibiting use of Is there a motion to authorize or adopt the resolution regarding prohibiting use of trailers longer than thirty feet on certain county roads?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Abshur. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes, next item's proposed, first reading of a proposed ordinance adopting Tom's Branch into the road system. Fabian, is everything in order on this?
Judge, again, I'd just like to say that this is another case of, it was a road that the county had worked before, but it just was not on our books. It wasn't in the system. But I think it will get the road, and the road does meet all of the qualifications that we have now. So it is, it is good to go.
All right, Roy, please proceed.
All right, this would be a new ordinance. This is permissible under KRS 178.01011B. It allows the county fiscal court to take a road into the county road system. This road is in District Three. It's called Tom's Branch. It's approximately one hundred and eighty-five feet in length, and it's fifteen feet wide. The signed signatures meet the requirements, and this does meet the requirements of our ordinance that we have in place.
Thank you, sir. This item will be on the agenda for the next meeting, and assuming it's had its proper advertising, we will be in, prepared to act on it at the next meeting. Next item's the first reading of a proposed ordinance authorizing improvement issuance of Pike County, Kentucky general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed ten million for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, and improvements of the landfill owned and operated by the county, authorizing the levy of direct annual tax on all taxable property within the county, in addition to all other taxes, in the amount sufficient to pay the principal and interest on the bonds, to the extent that revenues are not sufficient, authorizing the taking of all other action, including execution, delivery, continuing disclosure agreement, federal tax certificate, official statements, such other documents, agreements, and certificates necessary or required for the issuance of the bonds and the financing of the project. So let me just briefly, Roy, go ahead and present the first reading of this, and then I'll say a couple of things.
All right, this would be a new ordinance, the purpose of which is to establish the guidelines for which we can apply for a bond for the landfill. This is the first reading. If anybody really wanted a copy of this, this is probably one of the longer ordinances that we have. It's about fourteen pages long. You can request a copy either through the county attorney's office or through the judge's office. I'm not going to read this thing, which I think the judge will agree with me, I'm allowed to read it by title, and he's going to go into further detail. It's something that the county has to have in order to proceed with the bonds for the landfill.
Thank you, Roy. Just so people understand what that language means, this will be the bond, authorizing the bond issue to pay for the cost of the landfill. There's not a tax increase, just so anybody out there wants to, essentially what that means is if the county were to be in a position where it couldn't pay for the bond, then the county would be obligated to pay, raise taxes, because that way, you know, governments can't default on their obligations. People were, you know, upset when the garbage bills went up. Simple fact of the matter is, the decisions that were made five years ago are what got us to this point. We've got the permit for the landfill expansion. We're working on that now. If we had not done that, Pike County Solid Waste would have probably stopped operating in 2019. I don't think there's any question that Pike County Solid Waste would not have operated. This landfill expansion is vital, in my opinion, to the future of this county. How is, how is garbage disposal important? Well, any business that comes here, any business that's here, whether it's the hospital, the college, any business here, has to dispose of waste. You have to dispose of household waste. And right now, between the county and city, there's about sixty thousand tons of garbage a year going into landfill. So it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that we can haul it to Johnson Creek and dispose of it a heck of a lot cheaper than you can haul it to Green. The next closest landfill to us is Green. Now, Johnson County Judge Executive Mark McKenzie told me that their solid, their solid waste contractor is paying forty-eight dollars a ton to the landfill that they haul it to. So you might as well just round that off to fifty, fifty dollars a ton. That's three million dollars a year that we would have to come up with just to, just to dump it in that landfill up there, not counting having to haul sixty thousand tons a year to Ashland or to Green. Now, you all probably are aware of what diesel prices are. The county would either have to hire more employees and a new fleet of trucks, or they would have to subcontract this out, because there would be probably a couple thousand tractor or trailer loads a year going to, to Green. Plus, you would have to come up with about five million dollars to shut down the current landfill. You'd have to come up with about two to two and a half million to build a transfer station. And you still have the cost of picking up the garbage for seventeen thousand commercial and residential customers every week. So, you know, I made a hard decision, the prior court made a hard decision, and it's got us to this point. This new landfill expansion will guarantee that we will have a landfill in this county for at least the next fifty years. If we're smart, and whoever comes in after this court, if they're smart in the way they operate it, it can be used as an asset for the county. It can generate money for the county. It can help subsidize solid waste rates for Pike County residents. At some point, we may be able to roll the rates back. Well, how can you do that? This landfill will give us a hundred thousand tons per year capacity for the next fifty years. If we're putting sixty thousand tons a year in it, that means there's forty thousand tons a year of extra space that we have. Well, if we were able to get forty-eight or fifty dollars a ton from the thirteen, from any of the thirteen counties that we're permitted, already permitted to take trash from, you could generate a million and a half to two million dollars a year in revenue for the county. It could be used to offset the cost for Pike County residents. It could be used for water, sewer, or any other need that the county may have in the future. Because as we continue to lose population, it's going to get harder and harder for the county to provide basic government services. So we're getting to the point now where we should be, hopefully, have a contract in place. Greg, when do you think the bids will go out on, I know, the bids are already put out in?
The bids have been put out, yes. There's a pre-bid meeting on April 16th, 10:00 a.m. with landfill for the contractors. The bid opening will be on May 3rd.
Okay, so just so, in case you didn't hear, we've already put the bid out for the construction of the landfill expansion. There's a pre-bid meeting April 16th.
Yes.
And the bids will be led on May 3rd. This is a very specialized project, and it's specialized in that the bid does require that whoever receives the bid to have done, was it five landfills in the last?
Have sufficient experience to have done three landfill construction projects in the last seven years.
Yeah, three, they have to have three landfill construction projects in the last seven years, because we can't afford to bring some contractor in and mess this up, because the stakes are too high. But this ordinance is necessary for us to be able to issue the bonds. The goal is to pay down as much as we can so that we don't stick the county with any long-term debt that we don't have to. Because it will, as we get, you know, farther down the road, it's going to be harder and harder for fewer people as we lose population to pay for these services. So I just wanted to mention that, but where if you heard the language about tax increases, this doesn't raise taxes. We've not raised taxes since I've been judge. And my goal is to get through the rest of this term without even having to think about raising taxes. And we're, we're in a pretty good position right now, so. All right, next item is the approval of the proposal for engineering support in construction, quality assurance services at the Pike County landfill. This is from Eric Consulting Engineer Geo-Cyntec, because once construction starts, they will have a person on the ground every day, sort of a construction manager. If it takes a year to do this, then that's what it's going to take. This proposal lays out the work that they're going to be doing. They're going to be hiring the subcontractor to do the water wells. And without me going through the whole thing, Geo-Cyntec has done a great job of getting us the permit done. The full scope of their work is in, in here, and the, bear with me for just a second. The total cost of the project, depending on how long it lasts, of course, is up to five hundred and ten thousand seven hundred dollars. And it's laid out in their engineering support during construction, their field services, the lab services, and the certification report that has to be done when it's completed. It's got all their rates in here and so forth. So is there a motion to authorize this agreement for construction support, I'm sorry, engineering support and construction quality insurance services for the landfill expansion in an amount not to exceed five hundred and ten thousand seven hundred dollars?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes, all right, Greg, any bids? Anything for you today? Any bids? Okay. Fabian, you're next, sir.
Judge, I really don't. I've got a lot of things to do today.
All right, are you feeling, are you feeling better? Are you feeling better?
Some, yeah.
You've been a little, a little under the weather, so we hope you're feeling better. All right, so we have the completed and scheduled work orders in front of us. It's item twenty-two on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the county commissioners recommended road maintenance for the upcoming period of time?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Any question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is treasurer's business. Mr. Stacy, please proceed.
Authorize the following interfund transfers for March 2024, to transfer six hundred thousand from the general fund to the jail fund, and to transfer two million dollars from the general fund to the road fund.
All right, next item is authorization to transfer six, six hundred thousand from the general fund to the jail fund, and two million from the general fund to the road fund. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshur. Any question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's monthly financial statement ending March 31st, 2024.
Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt as stated by the treasurer?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. I'll make a second. Any question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorize a check to builder construction in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for replacement of the Johnson Bottom Pool House roof once the project's complete.
Is there a motion to authorize the check for nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the Johnson Bottom Pool to builder construction as stated?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorize a check from the ARPA bank account to Mountain Water District in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. This is draws number eight and nine, and checks to Compass Municipal Advisors and Sturgill Turner Law Firm in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four dollars and ten cents for grant admin fees.
Is there a motion to authorize the checks as stated?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Abshur. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Excuse me, second by Commissioner Atkins.
Commissioner.
Allergies.
There's another couple to take.
Allergies. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
There's a bank statement for the balance that was in the LGDF recaptured account. Once that balance exceeds a hundred thousand dollars, we have to remit it back to DLG to put into our single county account. So I need to, authorization for a check to the Kentucky Department of Local Government in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents to turn over funds in the LGDF recaptured account back to the Pike County's LGF single county account.
Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Last thing I have would be to authorize payments to election workers, polling places, and election commissioners for the May 2024 election, once invoices are received from the county clerk's office.
Is there a motion to authorize?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Abshur. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we have need for executive session today, Bobby. Okay, we don't, we don't have any personnel matters, and we'll. Y'all, y'all need to think we need to go into executive session to discuss things we can? One of y'all can make a motion if you think we need to. If not, we'll just go in there. Y'all think we need to? Everybody, y'all think we need to? I'm just trying to get everybody out of here as quick as we can.
I don't think so. Not unless you say you need to.
I'd be fine. I don't.
All right, it's my motion to approve the acknowledged resignation of Richard Michael Roberts effective 3/25/24, to acknowledge the hiring of Jacob Evan Bentley as a solid waste loader at 2H rate of pay effective 3/25/24, to acknowledge the hiring of Isaac Stanley as a solid waste loader at 2H rate of pay effective 3/25/24, to acknowledge the hiring of Timothy Roberts as a heavy equipment operator on special crew at 6H rate of pay effective 3/20/24, to acknowledge moving William Smith and Sean Atkins from solid waste loader to solid waste non-CDL driver, both at a 3H rate of pay effective 4/1/24, to move John Willis from solid waste loader to solid waste non-CDL driver at 3H rate of pay also at, effective 4/1/24, and to acknowledge the resignation of Timothy Roberts effective 4/2/24. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any other question or discussion, seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, anything from, any, any other department supervisor? I'm not going, Jerry, come on up.
Judge, I need to update the court. It's a recent Washington day that Trail Division has utilized the highway state law, which allowed for travelers off highway vehicles referred to a Boeing three on section of Bay County Highway. Trail Division law, three decisions of District County Attorney's Board down, who filed petition on February 29th, asking for a section of Route 897, which was referred to as Oklahoma Road. We filed that petition on February 29th. State Department of Transit, District 12, Department of Highway and Road, there's one fact, one thing, two, one, asking for a few additions of documents. Pike County, Oklahoma, quickly, by March 25th, and on March 28th, received an email from the Chief District Engineer. District 12 personnel have reviewed the original and updated petition, documentation, and find that the proper documentation had been submitted, and they are holding this information in State Highway Engineer Office. And what that means is, we're asking to be able to have off highway vehicles. And what that means is we're asking to be able to have off highway vehicles travel from the recognized Kentucky trail down to Elkhorn City. Up to the mouth of Upper Pigeon Creek, which is part of fourteen mile. Which joins the south trail here of the Pike County ATV hillbilly trail system. This will allow people from all the states that are living big for a place to lodge, a place to go and travel from their south trail here at Upper Pigeon. And when this is approved, I had this one on. This one was on, the green light was on. I'm sorry. To be able to travel to Elkhorn City for lodging, gasoline. There's a drugstore there if, if need be. But more importantly, this is going to give entrepreneurs the chance to put in Airbnbs, places of lodging. We have one, uh, one entity, one, uh, entrepreneur already has a gas station, a grocery store and a deli who is going to sell ATV parts, do ATV repair. If and once this is approved. We've had a, uh, husband and wife put in a campground solely due to, uh, hillbilly trail system at the mouth of Ash Camp where it joins Elkhorn Creek. We have a gentleman's building three cabins due to hillbilly trail system at Shelby Gap. We had Airbnb go in at Dorton. And we just had a cabin completed, uh, on Blaze Branch in the area of Dorton. So what this goes to tell us is hillbilly trail system with the judge and the previous court and this court, this current court supporting it. The main object, the main reason was to bring tourism dollars here into Pike County to supplement the economy for the businesses. We have had people from every state, from Michigan, Delaware, Pennsylvania, all the way down to eastern seaboard. I'm not going to name them all, but it goes South Carolina, Georgia, Florida. Out west, we've had Kansas, Nevada, Iowa riders. We've had one group from Canada come down and ride. Two weeks ago, we had a well-known off-road group called Right Coast Offroad from North Carolina come up and ride. And they had tens of thousands of followers on TikTok. They gave us a very positive review last weekend. While my wife and I were up there riding, I got to meet the group that came down from Pennsylvania last weekend. They refer to themselves as the Can-Am Crew. They come and ride challenging, uh, rock climbs. And they said we have some of the best they've ever seen. And they have tens of thousands of followers, uh, on TikTok. So this goes to show, these people come and I named, I referred to eighteen different states and one, one, one other country there. These people that are coming in here are leaving money here. They're spending money with their local businesses. And we have not yet received one negative comment on our Facebook page from any of these folks that come in and travel. They're actually excited and enthused. They say that we have good trails, they are well-marked, and they are all enjoying that they're riding. So with the state highway...
You know, the sad part, Jerry, is most of the negative commented from people here at home.
Oh, well, yes, sir.
I mean, that, that's hard, it's hard to believe that people don't, there's a group of people here that don't want us to succeed on anything we do. And, um, you know, I've, I've said this ever since we started talking about this. These are not going to replace the jobs we lost in the coal industry. But it's a way, it's a small piece of a long-term strategy to stop people from leaving, to bring outside money in. And you never know who you're going, who you're going to bring in here. You remember the Trail Town meeting we had over at Blackberry? People from Connecticut were there. They had bought a vacation home in Williamson. Now, me personally, I don't think I'd be wanting to buy a vacation home in Williamson. Nothing against Williamson. Most of us think about, you know, going to a beach or somewhere. But there are people who want to be here in these mountains. They want to be here riding, uh, you know, ATVs. They want to be out here enjoying nature. And I've said, you know, people that live in urban areas, you know, they're used to traffic jams and smog and crime and the things that we don't really have to worry about here. And, uh, there's a lot better quality of life here than people give us credit for having.
The gentleman from Ca- uh, Connecticut you're referring to is Kevin Neesman. He has since purchased a home and has opened up ATV repair shop here in Pike County.
See, that's created jobs here. It's occupational net profit tax. Uh, you know, the one thing about it is we don't know who these people are that are going to be coming in here. It may be some successful business owner, entrepreneur from, from New York or somewhere that comes in here and falls in love with the place and decides they're going to make an investment here. There's a stigma or stereotype about this region, whether it's West Virginia, Kentucky, Virginia, where people look at us as dumb hillbillies. And you know that, and I know that, we all know that. Uh, but you've got some of the smartest, hardest-working, industrious people in the world right here. And, uh, you know, we need to, we need to let people know that we're here and we're ready to do business. And we're ready to, uh, to change that stereotype.
To sum up the, uh, petition process, now that the local District Twelve has forwarded to the State Highways Engineer Office. By statute, they have ninety working days to approve or disapprove their petition, their request for Elkhorn Creek. Uh, in my conversations with the people from State Highways Engineer Office, and even the local state police, I'd get documentation from them. They're all talking very favorable of this petition, of the idea of trail systems applying for state highways, sections of state maintained highways. And they're going by the example of West Virginia. West Virginia, over in the neighboring Hatfield McCoy Trail System, they have, uh, state highways, uh, legal to ride OHVs on. So people can access the trails without loading their side-by-side on their trailer every day. Because people come in state for an average of four days when they come out of state.
Jerry, let me ask you a question. Getting this, uh, obviously it's going to help Elkhorn City. It's going to be a shot in the arm to the restaurants and businesses there. People who may want to have bed and breakfasts or Airbnbs there. The question is, will this help get the trail system moving across the county? Will it help us get the trail system started moving, you know, uh, toward, you know, expanding it across the county once we get this done?
Most definitely. Once, and if this petition is approved, and it does look favorable, as we're working now to move into McCar, Blackberry, Belfry, Phillips area. If this section is approved, it'll be the first time, this is the first time in the state that any trail system has utilized this law. We are, we have filed the first petition in the state of Kentucky. If we get this one approved, I have got a forty-four-page petition that went to the District Twelve Department of Highways now in Frankfurt right here. With, this is their guideline. If it gets approved, when we get over McCar, we can apply for route ten fifty-six. People come off the Hatfield McCoy Trails, across the Make One Bridge into Buskirk, Pike County, into McCar. We'll apply for route ten fifty-six up to the Hog Trial Cabin, the Paw Paw, uh, tree hanging side of the Hatfield McCoys. Possibly up route, uh, what's it, three, three oh six, I believe it is. Up to McCoy Well. And we'll feed off there into the mountains into the trail system. So this will be the lead example. And yes, it will definitely help, uh, take the, we'll go to that section of the county next, and then we'll start tying it together.
Y'all any comments? I, I, I do think we've got some, um, have we put the bid out, Greg, on the building up there yet?
We haven't launched.
We probably need to go...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me. We put a bid out, um, we had a bid opening. I think there was a little laying the court proving in because of some kind of a solar project people were looking at.
Um, we need to talk about, be in a position to talk about awarding that bid. Because I do think we need an office up there where we can put, you know, the sheriff's office, ATVs. We've had a request from the Shelby Creek Rescue Squad about getting some equipment for them in case they needed to do, uh, you know, a rescue up there. That may be something that we need to talk about. I mean, it's not, you're not talking a lot of money here. But if we're going to make the trail system work, we got to make sure it's got the infrastructure it needs. I mean, and that, that would be an office where people can go get passes, where they could go get maybe refreshments. Get information about how the trail's laid out and stuff. And, um, make sure too that we have the trail, if something does happen and there's an accident, that we can get help to people. You know, and we, we're working on getting a designated air evac site up there. Is that correct, Jerry?
They're in place and coordinated.
Okay.
Dwayne Anderson, front, uh, fire, fire chief at Elkhorn City is over those coordinates for this part of the state. And he come up and did coordinates on two different landing zones.
So we do have the coordinates on the landing zones?
And the, uh, air lift companies have those coordinates.
And you know, I mean, let's just face it, going back to what Jerry's talking about, people been riding ATVs on state and county roads for as long as we've had ATVs. This is just going to make it legal so people who are just trying to enjoy the trails aren't going to get in trouble. And make sure that they've got the insurance and stuff that they ought to have if they're on the road, right, Jerry?
Yes, and I appreciate you, uh, bringing that up. We will be posting by signage in the local newspaper, on the county website, the requirements for the OHV themselves and for the owner, operator, passenger requirements. Once this is approved, we will make all that available to the public.
We got enough cars out here on the road already with no insurance, and we don't need anything else out there without no insurance.
Insurance is a requirement.
I'm sure Mr. Howard could probably verify that, that you've got a bunch of them out here with no insurance. And hopefully they're prosecuting. Uh, but we need to make sure that, uh, that we've got, uh, insurance on these vehicles and they've got the proper safety equipment. And then it'll help expand the trail system.
Yes, and also the building that was mentioned is a dual-purpose building. It is designed to be, uh, the front half of it to be like a storefront office building. And the back section of it all combined into one to be a garage area to house the sheriff's units. Uh, our, uh, trail operations manager up there, and his decision, they have nowhere to store any, any equipment, anything to work with. They're actually doing it at, at home right now, which is, uh, we, we thank them all often.
I don't, I don't think that, and Greg, I don't think that just because we've had, so the public knows, we've had, been approached about a, um, solar company that wants to acquire the rights for that site. It would, you know, if it works, it's not going to happen overnight. Would generate substantial tax revenue for the county and for the school system. Uh, would generate annual rent for the county. Uh, Big Sandy that owns part of the problem, that's been part of the property that's been leased to the county for the trail system, has already entered into a lease with this company. Um, this company's got leases and, and working on solar projects across the state here and other states in the southeast. You know, people can say, you know, it'd be against it or whatever, but drive to Lexington. When you get to Winchester, look over on the left, there's a huge solar farm there. I mean, it's, it's one of those things, it's going to be, you something's, it's something different. You might as well get prepared for it, it's going to be here to stay. And we need to take advantage of it if we can, if it helps the county. So...
Judge, just this week, uh, Chris Smallwood, our trail operations manager, his assistant Shannon Smallwood and myself, we provided three side-by-sides. I, uh, I provided my personal side-by-side. We met up there with the owner of Carolina Solar, Mark Batten, representative of Big Sandy Land and, uh, Carolina Solar's local liaison. We put them in side-by-sides and we meant to put boots on the ground and with a trails map and spotted each and every gas well. Places they're going, they proposed to put, uh, solar system, solar panels, excuse me. And we'll, we will have to sacrifice a couple, three trails. They're not heavily traveled trails, they're not our most popular trails. We can coexist with these people and it won't affect our, our trail system.
You know, and I mean, it'll open, you know, it, it's, it's a potential avenue for investment in this county. So, uh, we've not signed a, uh, lease. I've got Roy looking into it, making sure that it's not going to interfere with the trail system. We've already been very clear that I wouldn't support it if it was going to impact the trail system. Uh, we've got too much time and money invested in it, and we're bringing people in, and we don't want to do things that's going to jeopardize that. And I think you'd probably agree with that, wouldn't you, I mean, all of you?
Judge, just one big reminder, this, uh, because they come to leave, uh, they're kind of early. With their legal documents. They're up to over a hundred trails. So if you're talking about losing maybe three, and we wouldn't necessarily lose it like right away, because it could be several years, as you mentioned, before these things would become operational as far as if, if they were able to get the solar panels in there. Um, so by that time, who knows how many trails? But I'm pretty sure, did you tell me you had over a hundred trails now?
We are now in the excess of one hundred marked trails.
So, you know, if, if you had to give up even three, I mean, that's just such a small thing that, it, and you know, they've got it pretty well. We've got the, the main areas. Now, that is stuff we couldn't give up, but the smaller ones that offshoot, uh, it wouldn't be impacted at all, really.
We discussed the main trails, a couple of points of interest that people locally love to go to. And, uh, they agreed verbally, and I think that can be put into writing, won't, won't be a problem. Uh, they understood these, uh, points that are important to us and they're, they're going to work with us.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anything from the deputy judge executive?
No.
Anything from the county attorney's office? Anything from the county commissioners?
No.
Anything from anybody else here before we adjourn this thing?
I'd like to say a couple.
You, I, I was getting ready to, you're, you're the next contestant.
Uh, I'd just like to let everybody know that Mr. Little and Blacktop Crew, they, they been out in Hitler Lake and, uh, they really got their hands full with that bridge down there in that water. I mean, that's, that, people don't live there, don't regan- realize how big that creek gets and how much it stays. And they can back it up for thirty, forty miles or something like that. But anyway, they're coming along with it, they got the pulling forward, ain't you, David?
Yeah, we're going to have that last fall, uh, soon, so hopefully by beginning of next week, we'll have a couple of laws for it. So I said no things, and then they will, they'll, they'll go a little faster when we get out of the park. But like you say, yes, a, a big problem with, uh, with the water, but when the water dries it down there, it takes a bit more of the water to get done.
Yeah, they, uh, they can hold her back a long time down there for that lake, you know, but I just wanted to mention that, let people know what was going on there. And you'll probably be getting to Blacktop here for a while.
Well, we, we actually, Blacktop, one day last week, Monday, and it was off aggressively, about the weather. I just got a call before I came into the court meeting that, uh, we may be able to pick Blacktop up two days next week. They're doing another project, and they're not going to be running surface for at least three days, uh, for three days the next week. So, I don't know, it's down a slow start.
Yeah.
Hopefully things will be available.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, we put one bypass in on, is that Drift Branch, is that where it's at?
Mm-hmm.
Put one bypass in, it washed out. Twice.
Twice.
Twice. Yeah, I mean, it's a big job, and, uh, road department's working hard. We're going to get a lot of paving done this year. These guys, these guys have got a lot of, uh, roads they want to get paved. We put money in, we've asked the governor for discretionary funding. Uh, we have, uh, and we're going to get a pretty substantial amount of flex funding. Frankie is working to, uh, collect some of the money on, on things that we've already done, that we've got, uh, the Penny Street Bridge money and some other things that we're going to get reimbursed. We're going to reinvest that money right back into the roads and bridges. And I will say this, in the five years and three months I've been county judge, we've done more Blacktop and more roadwork than the twelve years, I would bet you anything, in the twelve years before that.
I agree with you.
And we, it's because we've been able to manage the money and we've not wasted it. And you know why I disagree with going back to the magistrate system? Because I think it's going to waste a lot of taxpayer money. If you get back into the position to where everybody just worries about their little part of the county and they don't worry about the county as a whole, you're going to end up right back. And I think people need to remember where we were before it went to commissioners. You remember the, the prior court before we came in, I came in the first time, they had had the property tax raised twice. They had put the occupational tax in. The county was bouncing checks. The county had two audits where the bank accounts were not even accurate. Is that right, Frankie? Trans, transfers out of the bank accounts that weren't noted. Uh, most of the bank accounts, I think there was only two bank accounts that had correct balances, if, the multiple bank accounts.
On the financial statements, yeah.
On the financial statements. You had two audits that were just awful, and the county lost its credit rating. And what people didn't understand about that, it's like if you have a bad credit rating, the county was so bad off that my first year as judge, we applied for a credit card. Am I lying, Frankie?
We did.
Did we get turned down for it?
Turned down for a ten thousand dollar card.
The Pike County Fiscal Court. Now, this is what kind of management you have before, was turned down for a ten thousand dollar credit card. Just about any high school kid that graduates can get a five thousand dollar credit card. The largest county in Kentucky couldn't get a credit card. And if the county goes back to that, then you're going to, you're going to get what you deserve. If you put people like that in office that can't manage the resources, that can't get the roads paved, that can't replace these bridges, the same... the roads paved, that can't replace these bridges, the same people that you let ignore the landfill that was filling up, didn't do anything on it, and a lot of these other problems. Think about the largest county in Kentucky bouncing checks. How many pay raises, Frankie, before I came as judge, did the county have in the ten years before?
In the ten years before? Maybe two, Judge?
Yeah.
If I remember right.
County employees have had. This will be the fifth pay raise since I've been judge, is that right?
Right. We've had the cost of living every year.
Okay? And we've not had to raise one dime of taxes. You can do this job and move the county forward, but you can't do it by just getting on Facebook and Demagoguery. The same people that helped get the county in the shape it was in are the ones that are against the trail system, that complained about raising the, we would not have had to raise the garbage rates like we did if they had taken care of it over the years. The same reason your water rates went up is they went seventeen years without a water rate increase. You can't do that without bankrupting the water district, and they almost did that. That's why your infrastructure's in such bad shape. So hopefully, the county can continue to move forward. We've got a good court, we're working together, we're going to do a bunch of roadwork this year. And if you have an issue with your roads, don't put it on Facebook, because guess what? Nobody may see that. You can call the Road Department at four three two six two three zero. I'm sure Mark Zuckerberg, the guy that owns Facebook, is probably not really paying attention to your comments about a road problem in Pike County. Call the Road Department, four three two six two three zero. They're open every day. Tell them what the problem is, and they'll put a work order in, and either Fabian or one of the road foremen in that particular district will be out there. And something else that people need to understand, we have more people working in the Road Department right now than when you had magistrates. You have more people. You have a special crew that when I came in, they didn't have. You've got more people with new equipment, more equipment, getting more work done. So I think there was a big misconception that, you know, there was not as much roadwork being done. But we'll see what happens over the next three years, and then we'll see what happens after that. And we'll see, you know, you'll be able to see what gets done. So if you have an issue, again, with Fabian or the Road Department, call four three two six two three zero. The judge's office number is four three two six two four seven. So anything we can help you with, it's better to call us than put it on Facebook, because we may not know about it. And, you know, Facebook doesn't fix your problems, but our offices can help you address those. So is there anything else coming for the court?
Yeah, Judge, I would like to remind everybody about May the fourth, the Fish Trap cleanup, and any of the, you know, we're going to try to help with tourism clean that trash up, and if anybody has any questions, they can contact Chuck, Stephanie at Solid Waste at four three two six two four five, or the Pike County Cleanup Board, or any of the businesses that wants to donate, to advertise, to help with this, we'll take donations also to help clean up some of the trash at Fish Trap. I wanted to put that out there, because-
I appreciate you mentioning that, and we'll remind everyone. Before we close out, I do want to mention that we have Pikeville City Commissioner Bob Shertle here. Bob, welcome. Last week, the city lost longtime firefighter, Robert Lindsey, who's a good friend of ours, was a member of Thomas Cecil Lodge. It was a huge loss for the county and the city, and we want to extend our condolences to the Lindsey family. And also, Noah Cross, whose dad is Jason, his mom is Mitzi. Uncle is Family Court Judge Kent Varney, is critically ill at the University of Kentucky. Also, Katrina Evans, who is a friend to a lot of folks. Katrina is, is, is very ill at Pikeville Medical Center, and just like to ask everyone to remember them in those families in your prayers. Pike County's had a hard time the last few weeks. I received a call yesterday from the coroner, Kevin Hall, that Pike County has had six suicides in three weeks. And there's a lot of people hurting. If you're listening to this, or if you know someone who you are concerned about, who may be depressed or fighting addiction or some other, you're concerned about them potentially taking, you know, their own life or doing something like that, call nine one one. Call Mountain Comprehensive Health Corporation, which is our regional mental health provider. Call the state police. I am going to reach out today to the Health Department to see if there's something that they can do to bring awareness to this. But that is alarming, that we've had six suicides in three weeks. And these, some, some, you know, and it was, you know, male and female in their thirties to their eighties. And, you know, for somebody to do that, they've got to be really depressed, and we need to make sure that we let people know that if you're really down and you're having thoughts about hurting yourself, don't do it, get help. There's, there's ways to get help. So-
I'd like to say one more thing. Everybody remember you former commissioner, Orville Blackburn, he's having a real hard time. He's been in the hospital over a week, and they're going to have to do three bypasses on him, sixty, or seventy, eighty to nineties on the main artery next week. And just keep him, he's having a real hard time, and he's, he's a real good guy.
And Orville is a great guy. He was a good commissioner, and, you know, people were asking why he left. I don't think he would have left if his health had been-
His health wasn't good, Judge, and about four years ago, he had open-heart surgery before, and they got to go right back and do it again.
Well, I'll try to call him today, and remember Orville in your prayers too, so thanks for letting, I didn't know that, thanks for letting us know that. All right. Any other business coming for the court?
I think, Judge, one more thing. Seen Jeff Justice back there, and I wanted to mention that I think today's his mother's birthday, and I think she's about eighty-six. Fine lady, and-
Will you tell her happy birthday?
Just wanted to mention that, because she's a very fine lady.
Well, it's, it's fine family.
Happy birthday.
Any other business? All right. With that being said, I would ask Commissioner Apsher if he would say the benediction, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Father God, once again, we thank you, Heavenly Father, for allowing us to be here this day. Praying, Lord, in everything that we do, we do it, Lord, with honest hearts and try to do the things that will benefit this county. I'm thankful for reaching everyone in here, Lord, and I pray your blessings upon them all. And again, bless the little cross boy and the Evans girl, and Brother Orville, and all, Father, that do to mind us grateful, and just be with us and help us, Lord, as we continue to try to do the thing in order to move this county forward. Father, we thank you, we love you, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Your motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Apsher?
Yeah.
Yes, we are adjourned.